Sure, thank you Brad. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the 232nd meeting of the Audit Committee, Tuesday, June the 3rd, 2025. Can I get a roll call by the Chair, please?
Yes, we record reflect that Trustees Kistner, Watson, Evans, Nigazison, and Wilson are present.
May I get an approval committee meeting minutes, April 1st, 2025, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. There are no comments by the Chair. Internal Audit, Presentation of Reports, Treasury Cash, Investments, Bond and Debt, and Post Insurance Compliance. Todd, good morning.
I thought I had it. My bad. Good morning, everyone. So we do have the Treasury Audit. We've broken into two parts, Cash and Investments, and then Debt. And we did that last time. We just found it easier to manage that way. I do want to take a minute to introduce some of the team who are here. Megan Burton, she helped work on the Cash Investment side. You guys meet the team very awesome. And then we're Thurman Brooks, who are here. He was on the, actually, the, when we did the contract renewal, I mentioned him last month. He and I did the Debt side. So we basically had the two old guys on the Debt side. So I'm going to go over everything. So I just wanted to introduce some of the team. That's just part of our team. So if you go ahead and do the Cash Investment Presentation and go to Slide 2 there. So the last time we did this, we presented this area to the Board was back in January of 2020. I don't think any of you guys were here for that. Mr. Wilson might have came on just right after that. So as to the organization makeup of the Treasury Department, you obviously have Tim as the Secretary Treasurer. You have Assistant Secretary of Treasury. Position is now vacant, will be filled. And then you have an Office Associate, Senior Treasurer Associate. They both work on the fourth floor. Then you have an Account Associate. That was the employee that operates the Cash. She's the cashier, basically. She operates the window that you guys see on the fourth floor here. Then you have numerous third-party consultants that help out with this overall function. You have the US Bank Advisors. They advise on, help execute investment transactions. You have Clearwater, they do a reporter analysis. PFMIPA, they help advising Tim on which debt deals to pursue. Gilmore Bells, our Bond Counsel, to help with the docs and opinions, the disclosures. DAC helps with disclosures. NAPC is the Pension Consultant. You meet them every quarter when they give you the quarterly update. Raftelos does the rate modeling, physibello studies. Now, Tim will be doing renewing the Raftelos contract at the Finance Committee meeting. So you'll talk more about that when you have that meeting. Let's move on to Slide 3. So Treasury, again, does manage Cash Investments, including the Pension Plan, and which is audited and by the external audit. District funds for the year averaged about 636 million for the first 10 months of 25. That gives you an idea how much money they're managing. Now, again, also the managed debt, again, which will be a separate report. Now, guidance on this area is contained in an ordinance, 14294. It basically covers everything around Cash and Investments. That's the main guidance that the District has, as far as what was published here. Now, by policy, the District is allowed to invest as follows. You can see the percentages. You see these on Tim's monthly report. You'll see that in the Finance Committee. Those are the percentages that he goes over. Those also line up with the state guidelines. That's where they actually come from. Now, if you move over to Slide 4, Investment of Excess Cash. So basically, excess cash is invested according to that policy. Mainly, we're talking about the operating account. And that's based on analysis performed by Tim and Assistant Treasurer. They work with engineering and accounting, determine what our cash needs are going to be in the next 30, next 60 days, next 90 days. Generally, I think the general rule is to keep 30 to 45 days on hand. You can see what, on the Cash Accounts on the left-hand side, you invest over in investment accounts. You know, the proceeds come back over and through the accounts. Now, on the previous page, I mentioned we have seven DDA accounts. Now, I have three listed here. Three of the other four are what they call zero balance accounts. Money goes in, money goes right out. And the fourth one is very similar. And I'll show you how that works on the next page here, if you go to Page 5. So basically, everything here runs through that main operating account. That's the center point. Money comes in. You've got various sources. You've got a reimbursement for the state for our project costs. You've got money collected by the cashier. You've got a lot box. That's where customers send their payments. That's where we actually get physical checks. And you've got the third-party vendor account at the bottom. That's kind of a catch-all. That's for our collection agencies. That's for our attorneys that are collecting money. That's also for the company that does our electronic receipts. If you guys have your account debited, you know, you have like a RMA debt, that company collects it. The money shows up in that third vendor, third-party vendor account, goes into the operating account. So then you have the outflows from there. You have the controlled dispersment. That's a ZBA. That's a zero balance account. So as we're cutting checks, that account is funded as the checks clear from the main operating account. It's a zero balance account. Payroll, same way. Then you have the healthcare account. We are self-funded on our healthcare, which we wrote that process during the healthcare audit. So we fund healthcare payments to the providers, which the checks are actually cut by Signet. They pull the money out of that account and they cut the checks for us. That's how the hell that works. Any questions? All right, next slide, Slide 6. So as far as the scope, operations, we wanted to look at operation-related processes around the Treasury functions. Now, this half is just on the Cash Investment side. Again, we addressed the debt in the other report. Particular attention was devoted to compliance, policies, ordinance resolutions, the district, and the related policies of the State of Missouri. So we're supposed to be in sync with their policies, which we are. We did do a detailed testing analysis, reform of data and transactions for calendar 23 and then early part of 24. And we also did process views that ran all the way through this last month, really. Tim is probably sick of me because I've been bugging for the last two months, so. Slide 7, Objectives. Overall objectives were to ensure that processes and related controls are accurate design, you know, to offer proper safeguarding of assets, timely accurate determination of cash position, you know, proper processing of the transaction, which involves separation of duties, proper review and approvals. Again, wanted to make sure we're complying with applicable state and district guidelines, including the Charter. There is one that, one provision in the Charter that mentions, you know, policies need to be updated and consistent with the guidelines of the State of Missouri, which we are. Slide 8, please. We wanted to ensure the compliance or requirements of that big ordinance, 14294. This includes the District's overall investment policy, wanting to make sure we're using board-approved depository bank, we're investing board-approved commercial paper, vertical listings, we're using proper procedures for selecting investments, we're in compliance with the diversification requirements. Again, that's that report that Tim shows you. We're properly collateralized, being well-compliant with the board requirements. We're properly insured or bonded. We don't bond anymore. We use insurance now. I guess Todd kind of went over some of that insurance recently. We have a lot of insurance. Methodology, Slide 9. We, to form throughout, we obtained, you know, the relevant documentation, including the Charter and the policies and the state policies. Did a lot of walkthroughs. Spent a lot of time with Tim. To identify any process on control of gas or deficiencies. We did obtain real-time access to the banking system, which was really helpful. The banking system is actually pretty good. That was pretty user-friendly. We were able to see everything going on in there. You know, the wires, the checks, the EFTs, the virtual card payments, the workflows for everything. We could see the approvals. We could see everything, how it flowed through, and how the approvals worked. So that was really helpful. We conducted detailed analysis of data and transactions. We made sure deposits were going to board designated depositories. Looked at investment purchase transactions, making sure, you know, diversification of portfolio, or, you know, was properly diversified. Make sure we're properly collateralized. Looked at the determination of the cash position. And then we did some testing on the payments over 50,000. Those required two approvals. We were able to see that in the system. Wire transfer to third parties, same idea. Internal transfers. We saw the workflows for those. We also tested that schedule that Tim prepares, test to make sure that's done properly, and good procedures there. Any questions? Results, this went well. Clean opinion. No significant deficiencies were noted. We did identify two opportunities for improvement. Both items include some policy updates. So the first one was wire transfers to third parties. Go to Slide 12. Now, per district policy ordinance, a transfer of funds from district accounts in favor of a third party shall be authorized only at the request of any two authorized representatives of the district. That's the quote. That's exactly what it says in there. It's Section 6 from that ordinance. Now, over the years, the District has, for efficiency purposes, and we agree with his idea, throughout the process in the banking system for a wire transaction, considered to be repetitive. Was it transfers that occur monthly or several times a year? Sometimes, a good example would be our funding of claims to Thomas McGee. We regularly use that wire transfer every month. So they create a template in the system that contains the debit and beneficiary account information plus description, and they lock that down in the system. And then they approve that. And then, once that's in there, they use that moving forward. Now, the issue that we have, for each step, there's only one approval required. The template only requires one approval. And then, once they start using it, there's only one approval. So we're bypassing that dual approval requirement by doing it that way. So that was our concern. So what Tim has done already, he's made a change in the system, which we would prefer that the correction be made. He changed the system to require two authorized approvals for creating the template. So then, once they approve the template, then they can have one approval after that. So I think we're good with that. So if you go to Slide 13. Now, from a policy standpoint, I think we need to address this whole concept of using the repetitive wire template and so forth, and address it in the policy. And, because there's no mention of whatsoever in the policy. So that's what we're recommending. Slide 14. Another additional update to that District Policy, same ordinance. The policy language is a little outdated right now. It still uses the term manual signatures. For payments over 50,000, it says must be signed by the manual signatures of two authorized representatives of the district. Currently, that, those approvals are really occurring in the banking system. There are some backup signatures, but that's not really where things are being approved. It's in the system. So, and those backup signatures are probably going to go away. So we want the policy updated to reflect the way the approvals are actually occurring, you know, within the system. And they're, you know, they are authenticated. They use multi-factor authorization. And the people that do it, they have tokens. They get the code and that, so and so forth. So they're pretty secure. Any questions on that? Right.
Two-factor.
Yeah, it's electronic. Yeah, they go in the banking system and just hit approve, basically. They're logged in with the MFA and all that stuff. So that's the way it's happened now.
There are still two approvals. They're just electronic instead of.
Yeah, and we were able to see the workflow. You could actually see, well, it said Tim, and then it said Bronstone, or whoever was the next one. If there are any questions on that, I'll move on to the Debt portion here.
Real quick, I guess it's more towards Tim, Director Tim. What, when you, I'm assuming we have to collateralize all the deposits with securities. Is that, is, I just know that in the past, not with this government, but in other ones, maintaining those collateral and inventory of that collateral, is that being done? Because I know that's one of the issues.
Yeah, so it was more difficult to manage when we, when the bank actually bought securities. But the bank now has a Federal Home Loan Bank Letter of Credit that covers well beyond the deposit totals that we're keeping. So that is something that we monitor regularly. But, I mean, we're targeting less than 2 million in cash to hold in the bank. That letter of credit, I think, is like 40 million or something, so.
It's 45 billion.
Okay, good. And it just, it covers everything, then?
Covers it, right. That's right. Thanks.
Okay, I'll move on. Move on to the next one here. This is the Debt side. So if you open to Slide 1. So if you, if you guys are aware, we, the District utilizes the bond financing for the purpose of funding, you know, the CRP, the Capital Improvement Replacement Program. So what's the objectives are? Let's try and keep up with the federal and state clean water requirements. And then, meeting the requirements of the consent decree. So to put some structure around this process, the District published basically three board-approved documents, which, first off, it was the master bond ordinance. Then you have the debt management policy. Then we also had the tax advance financing compliance policy and procedure. You can see the ordinance and resolution numbers there. But those are the three documents that really represent the bulk of the District's published guidance around this whole area. Now, if we go on to Slide 2. As of April 30th, 2025, there have been six different bond authorizations or bond measures since 2004. You can see them listed there. So a total authorization were 3.87 billion. So we, since that time, we have, in senior bond, reverend bonds, includes the WFFIO, the one WFFIO, we have had 22 issuances in the amount of 2.3 billion. We also had subordinate revenue bonds through the state revolving fund, 25 issuances of those. That's 1.84 billion, or 1 billion. Now, you add those up, that gives you 4.13 billion. Now, of those 22 senior bond issuances, 10 of those involved refundings. So that you have to back out. So if you back out the refundings, that's 711 million. So that leaves total new money of 3.419 million. Now, if we go on to Slide 3, you take the authorization amount and you back out that total new money amount. That gives us how much we have left. So basically, the remaining authorized, and on issues, about 450 million, you know, before we have to go back to the divorce for more authorization. Now, all issuance amounts above represent par amounts, do not reflect any deprimands. We've never had discounts on our bonds. Now, let me clarify something. So when I refer to the premiums and discounts, this only applies to the capital market bonds, not the state programs or the WFFIO. It's the new money capital market bonds. You know, we sell those bonds, and then we get the money. It goes in a project account. We fund our project, refund the construction from that project account. Now, with the state program, it's completely different. It's basically a loan from the state that is evidence bond to bonds from the District. They're called participant bonds. Well, we are the participant. But basically, it's a loan. It's evidence by our bonds. There's no money upfront. We incur project costs as they incur. Then we submit reimbursement request documentation package to the state monthly, and they review them. They go through them pretty thoroughly, I might add. They reprove them, and then they reimburse us. So I just wanted to kind of make that distinction. So as of April 30th, we just owed 1.95 billion in principal amounts for the bond debt. Now, all our bonds are revenue bonds, which means all the principal interest amounts are to be paid from our wastewater revenues. All the SRF bonds are subordinate. The right to payment is secondary to the senior reverend bonds. You can see the two programs down in the middle that we've used. The State of Missouri Direct Loan Program, that's the one we've been using since 2009. There was another program right before that. But basically, it's very similar. It's slight differences. They work the same way. All the district bond issuances are, obviously, all the capital market are tax advantage, except the 219C and the 2010B Build America Bonds. And all the capital market issuance are considered to be municipal securities. The reason I mention that is because it triggers some compliance requirements. Those two items do.
We don't, we don't issue taxable bonds, do we?
We have issued taxable bonds. The 2019C mentioned here are taxable, but that's the only time that we've issued taxable.
You got a little tail at the end that you got to deal with.
Yeah, well, the taxable bonds, they're, at that, the time we issued them, we could get better savings from those bonds than we could, and better pricing than we could on a tax-exempt. That was in 2019. But typically, tax-exempt are going to give us, yeah, the best.
All right, cool.
Okay, so we're on Slide 4 here. So, since there are tax advantage and municipal securities, and we also have the state loans as well. There's some additional requirements that trigger some IRS regulations, there's some SEC regulations, and then some state regulations. They kind of fall in with the four main areas of accountability. See the bottom there? Accounting for expenditures, accounting for investments, accounting for use of the finance assets, accounting to the bond holders. That's reporting disclosures. Now, for the investment part, that second one, doesn't apply to state programs. As I mentioned, we don't get any money upfront, so there's nothing to invest. Now, the SEC rules require that issuers of municipal securities make certain disclosures. And they require those disclosures to be made to the MSRB. That's the Municipal Securities Room looking board. Those show up at the, and my website to the right there. And I'll actually show you a few of those.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt your flow. I want to correct one thing. I said the 2010Bs were also taxable bonds. That was a special program run by the federal government, where if municipalities issued taxable bonds, the federal government would subsidize. So we get semi-annual subsidy payments from the federal government to kind of make us whole for those. So we did issue taxable bonds in 2010 and 2019. Sorry about that.
Yeah, those are Bill America bonds. All right, I'm sorry. Slide 5, as to the scope. So this is the fourth time we've looked at this area since 2012. So we focus our energies, our activities occur after the most recent audit, which that scope here ended at the start of 2020. So we're looking at really 2020 through early '25 here. We focus on initial issuance processes and the compliance with the ongoing requirements to check each active debt, excuse me, issuance. Let's move on to Slide 6. The overall objectives, as far as our objectives were, ensure the process and related controls are accurate design implemented. It's really, which involve issuing procedures and the post-issuance procedures. So again, so we're making sure we're in compliance with the various items here at the bottom. IRS regs, SEC, State of Missouri, our master bond ordinance, our district debt management policy, the last policy, the district tax advantage finance compliance policy and procedure. It's a lot of words. So if you move on to Slide 7. To accomplish our objectives, we, obviously, we obtained and reviewed all that documentation. One thing I did when, this next one's kind of out of the blue, but we did test the contracts for third-party service providers that I mentioned in the last presentation. We tested that selection process. We also reviewed the bond documentation, including the transcript proceeding for some of the issues within a period. That's what, that's what this thing is. That's just for one of them right there. We obtained, again, so, and we held discussions, did a lot of walkthroughs, mainly with Tim. Gave him understanding of all the procedures utilized for how they issued the debt, the initial reporting, how they're accounting and processing debt process. how they're accounting and processing debt proceeds. I did talk with accounting a little bit about some of the stuff as well. The process for reimbursements, getting reimbursements from the state, investing the proceeds, accounting for investment activity, accounting for the use of the finance assets. There's certain IRS regulations, we have to use the proceeds for certain types of assets. We're making the disclosures. We did look at the debt coverage ratio compliance. That's, that's a requirement of the master bond ordinance. Accounting and Tim both monitor that monthly. That gets tested by the external auditor every year, and it gets retested every time we issue new bonds as well. Any questions there? So slide eight. We did review disclosures at the, at the MS system. We kind of tried to line up disclosures with the activities that were going on here. So if you go on to the next page, I'll show you some examples, slide, slide nine. So this, this shows, this, if you look at the left corner, you see the blue parts is issued. Those, these are issuances that have occurred recently. And you can see that we have the 25A, the 24A. These are all capital market, not the state or federal programs. And Tim's actually going to be talking about that 25A at the Finance Committee. I mean, if you click on, if you click on the name, and you can, that's such a hyperlink. You can click, there's a lot more information below that. If you want to slide 10, these are event-based disclosures. Now the first two at the top on the left, they have to do with that 25 refunding. That's what we're really calling those bonds, and we're paying them off with that, with that refunding. Then below that, you'll see, you can see our loans with the state. You see 24B, 24C, 24A. To the right, you see some more documents. There's a lot of information if you guys are interested looking up here. I just want to give you some examples. If you go to slide 11, you can see where we posted our financials for the last three years. Again, this is for the bondholders, so they can get a good understanding of how, how the district is performing if they went by our bonds, so, so to speak. Any questions? Overall, what does Sash have to say to opinion on this? It went really well, no significant deficiencies. We did not identify any violations within the IRS, SEC, or state requirements. Again, we have one opportunity for them. Again, it's just, again, about, around the policy. If you move to slide 13. The one idea, item that we did identify is around the provisions of the district debt management policy. Now, the, what, what the policy says regarding the terms of the debt, it says to find out make sure the bond will not exceed 30 years from date issuance. Now, we do have three issuances, issuances that exceed that 30-year policy guideline shown above. Being said, those three issuances were all approved through board ordinances. You know, Tim, when we, when we did this, Tim went over the benefits of using these types of bonds and so forth, and it was approved through ordinance, which is acceptable. The, the three that we have are, once a WFFIO, the other are two state programs. Again, so in this case, the benefits were, were documented and presented to the board. We have no issue with them using this type of loan. I think what we want to see is the policy line up with what we're, how we're doing this. So we're making a recommendation there. Let's, let's adjust the policy a little bit and get the wording right. So we're recommending that we implement language that communicates. A 30-year guideline may be set aside by board ordinance. And we also need to, you know, if we're going to do that, we need to make sure the financial and economic benefits of these debt vehicles are accurately documented, and they were for these three. So that's, I think, that needs to be in the policy. Any questions?
Mending that, or changing the policy to say it can be set aside by ordinance, is there any value to putting in sort of parameters or examples of when that would be appropriate?
I don't know if we want to restrict ourselves, I mean, I think we want to make sure, I guess the main thing is, is it something that's financially, you know, financially the best, best choice?
We can, I mean, we can discuss parameters in each of these cases. Generally, the longer out you go with debt, and interest rate curve usually is, you know, upward sloping, so longer issuance usually have higher rates. In all three of these cases, there was no penalty for extending the maturity. So that was one consideration. Two of these, this is just the sheer size of the debt. I mean, the two of these loans are funding the incinerator projects, that's $900 million of debt altogether. So spreading out the principal payments is a bit huge savings to the ratepayers. So we can, we can think about that kind of language.
Just on, you know, in instances where it is financially advantageous to do something that says that you have to have some showing, you know, there, there has to be a...
That actually, that is the intention, to have something like that in there.
Right, okay.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I guess the answer is yes, sorry. Any other questions? That's all I have, I appreciate your time, guys, thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Next meeting tentative date, July 1st, 2025. And get a motion for adjournment.
Go move.
Meeting adjourned.
All right, good morning. This is the 267th meeting of the Program Management Committee of the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District. Can we get a roll call?
Yes, the record will reflect that all trustees are present.
All right, we have committee minutes from the April 29, 2025 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All right, there are no comments by the chair, so we have our engineering department agenda items, Rich.
Good morning, trustees. Kind of a light agenda this morning, I promise I'll make it up next month. But first three items are CSO volume, green infrastructure grants. Now I'll cover those three grants. The first one being for the Carter Park Extension. This ordinance authorizes the district to enter an agreement with HGS LLC doing business as RES Environmental Operating Company LLC. Will provide financial assistance through the green infrastructure grant for the construction of green infrastructure. Purpose of the grant program, again, is to reduce combined sewer overflows to the Mississippi River. The project will reduce runoff with the installation of one bio-retention basin, underground detention, and permeable pavers. The total cost of the project is estimated to be $493,000, and they're requesting full reimbursement for that amount, $493,000. There's an exhibit in your packet. This is located in North St. Louis City. The majority of the park is to the north, and you can see the three new features that they're adding to capture that runoff before it gets to the combined sewer system within the street there. All right, the next one is the CSO Green Infrastructure for Savannity's Convention Center. This ordinance authorized the district to enter agreement with the city of St. Louis for the grant program. Again, this is to reduce flow to the Mississippi River. Project will reduce runoff with the installation of an underground storage and infiltration system. The total cost is estimated to be $475,000, and the city of St. Louis is requesting $379,800 reimbursement for the cost of this green infrastructure. And again, this is located downtown, and they're doing some construction, so they're going to direct their stormwater to this underground detention, which will infiltrate into the ground. And that'll reduce the flow into that combined sewer system adjacent to the, to the area. I think it is, yes.
That's cool.
The, the last one is CSO for a daycare center. They entered agreement with Davy Daycare Center LLC to provide financial assistance. This is to reduce combined sewer overflows in the river to Pear watershed. The project will reduce runoff with the installation of one bio-retention basin. The total cost of the project is estimated $138,000, and Davy Daycare is requesting $138,000 for this construction. This is located in mid, or kind of South St. Louis area, near the Macklin Arsenal area. They're increasing their parking there, and they're going to be putting in a detention basin for this daycare center. All right, the next two items are projects that were bid over the last couple of months. I will indicate that both of these are construction items that I am requesting introduction and adoption at next Thursday's meeting, and I'll explain why I'm requesting, why we're requesting those to be done that way when, as I go through. So the first one is the Brantner Combined Sewer Abandonment and Reroute. This appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter a construction contract. The work consists of construction approximately 788 feet combined sewers from 15 to 21 inch, including 435 feet of sewer and tunnel. The purpose of this project is to band it and reroute deteriorating and failed combined sewer system. The district received five bids, and this is where I want to qualify. The two lowest bids had issues with their MWBE requirements, were deemed non-responsive. We took the third bid, which was still within 5% of our low bid, which is allowed by ordinance. That bid was from Bates Utility Company. The bid was below our designer's estimate in our appropriation, which includes $60,000 for utility relocation, just slightly above our budget for the project. Bates met our, our 10% minority and 10% women goal with 20.75 percentage meeting that goal. Again, the reason I'm asking for introduction and adoption, because of the delay in the review of the MWBE. This was a project meant for fiscal year '25, and it wasn't on the list to carry over to next year, so we want to get it within the fiscal year. So that's why we're asking for introduction and adoption.
Rich, when we don't take the highest, the lowest bid, because of whatever, how does, how are the, how are the, the bidders who were lower but didn't get the work? How are they informed? Do we have any...
They are, once the MWBE is reviewed, the letter goes out to all the contractors, letting them know what the issue is. Gives them a little bit of time to respond if they, if they have an objection to our determination. And in this case, both the low contractors did respond back, but they were still found to be non-responsive. In other words...
We give them a second chance.
We give them, yeah, there is a clarification process. We get the initial bid, it, it explains what their, who's participation's coming from. And then Shawna does seek clarification in a lot of cases. Hey, what's this guy doing? What's exactly what they're going to do? And usually, it has a problem with their certification for what they're performing or their NACICS code. That's usually where the issue lies. So we, there's a discussion. In this case, both the low, two low contractors knew that they were non-responsive. All right, the next item is the Sunset Country Club Pump Station Replacement Storage. This action appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter a construction contract. The work to be done consists of the construction of new submersible pump station, valve vault, incoming sewers, a conditioning monitoring structure, detention chamber and approximately 820 lineal feet of 4-inch force main, and will also include the abandonment of the existing pump station. The purpose of this project is to replace the aged infrastructure, provide additional storage, which will alleviate building backups and overcharged sanitary sewers. The district received seven bids on this project. The low bid was from Fred M. Luth and Sons. The bid was above our designer's estimate. The appropriation with utility relocation is below the original budget for the project. Fred M. Luth has committed to 20.12% minority and women participation, which meets our 10% minority and 10% women goals. The reason for requesting introduction and adoption on this one is we have a timeline where we have to be in and out of the golf course. So in other words, we're appropriating now the contractor during the fall and the winter season to be able to get in there, get out. So there's a, there's a sharp timeline on this, and with the bid coming when it did, we want to beat that timeline. All right, the last two items are both requests to allow for condemnation. The first one's the Lackland Avenue Block Storm Sewer. Ordinance will authorize staff to proceed with further condemnation efforts, including the filing of all necessary court pleadings and documents for the acquisition of permanent easements and temporary construction easement on one parcel of ground in the city of Overland. The easement, temporary construction easements are needed for this project, which consists of the construction of approximately 440 feet of 12 to 18-inch in diameter storm sewers. The purpose of this project is alleviate yard flooding and road ponding. Currently, the district has been unable to negotiate. This particular parcel is a vacant parcel that we need an easement on, and currently, the owner is deceased. So in order to get this moving, we have to basically go to condemnation. It'll end up being somewhat of a quiet condemnation. In other words, we are, we are unable to, to find a family member that's associated with it, and basically, it's got the project on hold. So we've used this method in the past, and it's, it's been allowed to the courts. Last item is Missouri River Wastewater Treatment Facility Access Bridge Improvements. This is a bridge that goes to our Missouri River Treatment Plant, which has some erosion around it, threatening the abutments. But since it's an access road and we own the property, but we would get off in order to make those improvements onto another parcel of ground, we've been unable to get the easement for, for, from that person. So this ordinance will authorize, again, to proceed with further condemnation on one parcel of ground. The easement, temporary construction easements are needed to construct the project, which consists of approximately 1,100 cubic feet of rock lining, 340 square feet of block wall, and 955 sheet, 955 square feet of sheet piling to protect those abutments. And again, it's to protect our access bridge to our Missouri River Treatment And again, it's to protect our access bridge to our Missouri River Treatment Plant. This particular property is, is just a farm property. There's nobody actually residing there. The property owner had an issue with a previous MSD project on their personal property at another location. So they've been hesitant. We've been working with them a long time. They have some questions as whether we could legally condemn for this. We've been holding off, actually I've been holding it for a couple of meetings. We need to get moving on this project, so we're going to proceed with condemnation with your approval.
Thank you.
That concludes my agenda. Thank you.
I had one question, sort of a delayed question. I didn't want to interrupt you and go back on the green infrastructure grants. This is just in general. It struck me that they, in these particular three examples, they're really kind of all over St. Louis area. So that's, that's great. Do we do anything to monitor or promote, you know, availability and distribution of these so that, you know, we're covering a broad area? Do we see some areas that make better use of it than others and?
Yeah, it's generally a combined area, which is the entire city of St. Louis. We have two separate programs. The commitment, the consent decree was to spend $100 million in the area that drains to the Mississippi and that combined sewer area. So that's generally downtown to the north area and then obviously to the Mississippi River. And then later in the consent decree, when we delayed the large tunnels, we committed to another $20 million in the, in the River to Pear watershed, which is more of South St. Louis area. And we made that commitment because that's where we're going to be building the large tunnels. But we do, we have, we call it a large grant call out to folks. And then when folks bring plans in to us.
And when you say folks, like who?
Any, any, any developer, anybody that's redeveloping or improving their property. But the reason we do the call outs is people, people that maybe don't have a project plan, but they, with the utilization of grants, they could. So generally, you see people doing redevelopments or the municipality, which is the city of St. Louis, will take advantage.
So the municipalities tend to know, so we're, okay.
Correct. No, we do. It's advertised and then where it's also available through the Botanical Garden, which is part of our small sewer, our small grant program that we bring to you on an annual basis. We kind of advertise through them as well. So now the word, we're, we're making our commitment to the green infrastructure. We've got projects planned, you know, well into the, into the consent decree, so. I could get that number for you. Yeah, it's, it's down to the gallon and we kind of monitor. You know, again, it's a modeled exercise that says it's supposed to hold this. But generally, I could, we could, in other words, the dollars are based on the gallons that they can actually capture and put back into the ground. But we, you know, obviously, we have seen, there is some reduction in the combined sewer overflow, so.
It works?
Yes.
A little bit, a little bit, a little bit.
Every bit counts. Is there any other business?
None on this meeting. Thank you.
All right, our next tentative meeting date is July 1st, 2025. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
We will call to order the 315th meeting of the Finance Committee. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, so that record will reflect that all trustees are present.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, the first item is a key performance indicator report.
Good morning, trustees. So I will start with the upper right-hand corner of the, of the document, which shows our projected wastewater charges and our stormwater impervious charges compared to budget. So overall, with respect to our wastewater charges, we are projecting that we will be approximately $300,000 favorable. So the revenues from that source will be above the budget amount. With regards to our new stormwater impervious charge, we are forecasting that that charge will be $86,000 favorable through the end of the fiscal year. Just to remind you, we just started billing for that charge in February of this year. It's effective January of this year. So overall, again, we have a very close forecast to budget. But we do expect at the end of the fiscal year to hopefully be favorable. I do want to just take a quick second to kind of update you on some of the impacts with respect to the tornado and how we're responding to that with respect to billings. So I expect that our revenue variance on the residential side will be impacted by the tornado. We have been in contact with City Water and we are in the process of obtaining reports for them, from them, of properties that have been completely destroyed or are rehabbed. The last thing we want to do is to send a customer a bill after they've gone through, you know, the destruction of their homes or damages to the property. So City Water has agreed to send us reports when customers contact them, to notify them that the property has been damaged. In some cases, City Water issues what's called a rehabilitation permit. The permit typically lasts for 90 days. During that 90-day time period, we have traditionally suspended wastewater billings and we will do that going forward. I have not thus far gotten anything from them, so we will do a follow-up here this week. They are, as I can imagine, are very busy trying to deal with infrastructure issues in that area. But again, I just wanted to let you know that we are taking into consideration the damages to those properties and the fact that some have been destroyed and are not issuing bills, of course, to those customers.
Excuse me, Mary, and I want to thank Brett and your leadership for that because that's very admirable to be considered those people who are having a tough time right now.
Thank you.
I, I second that. Also wonder, is the, the amount of, will it be a noticeable effect on revenues? I mean, is the, is the volume of it enough that we'll actually see some?
Right now, it's really difficult to determine that until we get that information from City Water with respect to the number of properties that have been damaged or completely destroyed. The, the issue that we have with the city residential accounts is they are un-metered. So actually getting that meter information as we do on a monthly basis would typically help us to forecast that. So we are really relying on City Water to tell us, you know, that this particular property is one that should not be billed. And then we have to go in and look at the attributes that are associated with that property and make the subsequent adjustments. So at this point, I really don't have a good forecast yet because we have not gotten any information.
And you said that typically the, it's a 90-day pause.
Well, typically, if a property is being rehabbed, it's a 90-day time period. They will issue rehabilitation permit and City Water doesn't bill for that 90-day period. And we don't as well. That permit occasionally gets extended because customers will need more time. I anticipate that that will occur, you know, kind of given the extent of the damage that we've seen. If the property has been completely destroyed, obviously, we will not bill until that property is restored and the water service is made available again.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Okay, moving to the upper left-hand corner of the report, which shows our budget status forecast. Right now, we are projecting that we will be approximately $109 million favorable. The bulk of that is with our capital program. That is projected to be right at $109 million favorable. Most of that, we are seeing some savings in our construction fund of about $60 billion. That's, I'm sorry, about $70 million. We're projecting that that will be under budget. The rest of that relates to projects that we will shift into the next fiscal year or they've been canceled. But overall, we are showing a favorable balance with respect to our operating budget. That is projected to be about $6 million favorable. And our debt service is projected to be about $5.6 million unfavorable. The bulk of that though relates to an unplanned refunding that we did. So we had to issue, we had cost of issuance expenses of about $4 million. I will tell you though, we have, at the end of the fiscal year, we normally start in May and we'll go through and take a look at our forecasts relating to debt service because some of the funding sources, as Todd mentioned earlier, are state revolving funds. We don't pay interest on those funds until we actually draw down. And as of the end of May, it looks like that we will actually see an uptick in terms of, of the favorable variance related to debt service. So that $5.6 million unfavorable variance will more than likely be favorable at the end of the fiscal year. We're not done with those forecasts yet, but so far during the month of May, it's looking very, very good. With respect to our debt coverage ratio, the chart in the lower left-hand corner of the page, we are showing that our senior forecasted coverage is 3.9 and our all-in forecast is 2.4 times. Our covenant requirements are 1.25 for senior and 1.15 for all-in. And we target two and a half times coverage for our senior bonds and 1.8 times coverage for our all-in bonds. So our forecasts exceed those target levels. So we're in good shape there with respect to our bond coverage ratios. And then finally, last chart there in the lower right-hand corner of the document there, it shows our average collection period has been pretty constant this fiscal year, right? At 60 days, we target 45 days. But that 45 days is inclusive of the ability of the district to actually shut off water service, which we are not doing right now. And so the only, truthfully, the only way we're going to hit that target is if we implement a shut-off program. So are there any questions about the KPI document? Okay, hearing none, I will move on to the next item, which is a resolution relating to the third of four option years for professional services with Reftellis Financial Consulting. As Todd mentioned earlier, Reftellis provides rate modeling support for, for the district. And we typically do that during the rate commission process. But on occasion, if we have to provide like updates to the EPA relating to consent decree information, we will have Reftellis to refresh those models for us. They also provide feasibility studies that are needed for our bond insurances. And in addition to that, they assist with the testimony that is required during the rate commission process. So they've done a good job for us. Again, this is to exercise the third of four option years with, with Reftellis. Are there any questions I can answer regarding that?
Is this a retainer agreement or a fee for service?
It's a fee for service agreement. So we have an hourly rate that they charge for our rate modeling services. Normally for the bond feasibility studies, there's a flat rate that they charge for that. So it, it is a combination of hourly rates and flat fee amounts.
Right, thank you.
Sure. Any additional questions? Okay, that's all that I have. Thank you for your time.
All right, excuse me, I'll take over. I've just got two items. The first one, I want to review with you a refunding that just closed this month. This is kind of a cool transaction. It's been five years in the making, so just wanted to, to walk you through it. The next slide, I titled it poorly. This isn't really a summary, it's more of a timeline. But this started back in 2015 when we issued some new money in refunding bonds totaling about 224 million. And this will kind of give you an idea too of the life cycle of an MSD bond. But in 2017, markets had moved a little. We had, we had a little bit of an opportunity to refund portion of those bonds and save it. It's unusual to get that only after two years. But we were also looking at the elimination of tax-exempt advance for funding and the Tax Cut and Jobs Act bill that year. That had primarily been the main source of refunding bonds. It allowed us to refund bonds before the call date by issuing lower-cost bonds, setting them aside to pay off principal and interest until the bonds are callable, then paying off the rest of it. I'm no longer allowed to refund tax-exempt bonds with tax exempt, new tax-exempt bonds prior to the call date. So that, that hurt our ability to refund. So we had to look for other ways for refunding savings. So in 2019, this was the taxable transaction. We did a large taxable transaction. But you can use taxable bonds to refund tax-exempt bonds. There were only a few bonds that really, in this, we, that was actually a very large issuance, but only a few bonds from this 2015 issuance that qualified for savings. But another 18.4 million of the par amount of bonds was refunded. And then fast forward just a few more months, this was right at the cusp of COVID. So the markets were just thinking about or starting to react to COVID. We were getting reports from overseas. We'd been working on this transaction at this point for a few months. And I was, I remember being really panicked that this transaction was not going to get done. As a matter of fact, we priced these bonds. We were able to lock in rates on March 10th, 2020, literally hours before the market kind of blew up. That afternoon, the market increased a quarter percent. The rest of the week, it kept going up. And some of these bonds that are being refunded have never seen lower rates since that time. So we hit this, it was luck, but we hit this really, really well from a timing standpoint. But we, we locked in the contract with one bank, Morgan Stanley. So that's why this is a, this is kind of a private placement or a direct placement, we call it. So we had a couple of banks that brought these ideas to us and said, hey, we're willing to take today's rates. They asked for a forward premium, which means that, you know, they're not going to accept the rates there since we're, since we're refunding in the future. So we had to agree on some, some amount of increase in those rates. So I'm going to show you how that worked out. But we actually, with, with this bank, locked in a refunding for 21, 22, 23, and 25. This was the largest one. They all had, they all had good savings. And I think the first one, rates did fall, or if we had waited, we might have saved a few hundred thousand more. But all these other ones, we saved millions more by locking these in and not waiting to see what the market was going to do. Now, we were happy with these savings regardless, which is why we took it to the board. We thought it was a good opportunity. But, you know, I'm going to show you that it looks pretty good that we did do that. So on the next page, and I like complicated graphs, we're going to focus really just kind of on the, on the middle section there. So everything to the left of that yellow dotted line that goes down the page, those were just the regular maturities up to the call date. So we paid those as we could. So we paid those as we could, as intended, because we lost our real ability to refund those early. The areas that are in the red are those par amounts or principal payments that were refunded, that I pointed to on the other page, one, some in 2017, some in 2019. So we're going to focus kind of on the rest of that. So the solid black line, the dotted black line and solid black line, that is the original yield-to-maturity curve of the bond. So every dot represents a principal payment at a certain return for the investor. So you can see they kind of go up over time. The dark and bigger dots are the ones that were still outstanding and that we looked at for this refunding. The green line at the bottom, that is where rates were in March of 2020, significantly lower than where these bonds were issued. But still, these maturities were all five years out from the time we locked in the rate. So we negotiated with the bank to come up with a forward premium that they would accept and that we would accept to lock in savings. That's what that blue dot is. So with the premium, you can see we're still below that curve, significantly lower yield than what we'd originally issued at. The yellow line is where rates were just last month, just if we had waited until these bonds were callable. So you can see rates have significantly increased. Some of the yields today would be even higher than when they were originally issued 10 years ago. So the next page will show you kind of how all this played out. So you can see the prior debt service column is the debt service from those maturities. And the 2015B would have been about $239 million over the next 18 years. The refunding that we just closed will reduce that by about $34.5 million, almost $2 million per year on average, about 1.9 million per year on average, 1.8 to 1.9 million for the next 18 years. So that's a significant savings. Present value savings, if we are backing it up to this year, is like $22 million still. It's significant savings. The prior ones yielded savings of about $5 million, $6.5 million, and $1.7 million on an NPV basis. So altogether, we, the four forward refundings we did save reduced future debt service about $72 million. That's not net present value. So these are significant transactions. You know, it's a testament, actually, to all the things that we do in this room and as a district because there was not a market for five-year forwards at the time. That's one of the difficulties we had pricing this. In the public market, you can get one- and two-year forwards. Banks were not going to many entities offering to lock in rates for five years. So, you know, that's a testament to all the things that we do in this room that keep our credit quality strong, you know, maintaining compliance with the consent decree, et cetera. So it was exciting, and anyway, I wanted to share that good news. And then, still fun, but not as impactful is the operating fund portfolio that we look at every month. So I'll start in the upper-left. The portfolio this month is down about $47 million from last month. That's because we had our semi-annual debt service payments in May, about $60 million. We're down about $47. Difference was just cash flow. Yield to maturity of our portfolio went up 13%. That's because with the payment, we had some investments mature that had lower yields that had been out there for a while. Those were used to pay the debt service. Benchmark yield also went up 14 basis points. Yields have kind of been up and down depending on, you know, what's getting tweeted out about tariffs. Not big changes in the weighted average maturity. So overall, now you can see, and I said this was coming, our portfolio is eventually going to yield more than the benchmark. So benchmark still turns over the entire thing every month, so it's going to go up and down a lot faster than ours will. But about 85% of our investments now have yields over 4%. So we're pretty well locked in for a while. And new investments that we're doing are usually about in the 4.3% range. So we're looking good on that standpoint. Sector allocation in the upper-right. Todd went through some of this kind of stuff. This is just kind of a summary version of it, but we are within all of our policy limits. So we're in compliance with debt policies. This month, we've got a little bit more treasury bond notes than we've had, a little bit less Fed agency. Commercial paper is pretty similar. Commercial paper, we tend to use for really short because we can get good yields. U.S. Treasury bonds yields have been decent, so that's why that percentage is so high. It's also the safest investment out there, and safety is important to us. Fund summary in the bottom-left, no thing, no big changes. You can see in the yield-to-maturity, some of the impact from the overall portfolio increase. Most of that's in the MSD operations, which matches our portfolio, 4.3% yield. In maturity distribution, we just have minor, you know, 1, 2 percentage point movements in all of these. So nothing, nothing important to point out there. So any questions about any of those? All right, that's all we have.
No, but I did appreciate the news about the...
The refunding?
Refunding.
Yeah, good. Yeah, no, I think those are interesting transactions.
Very.
Yeah, it was a tense time. We're glad to get it done and glad that it's, you know, worked out so well.
Very well.
All right, that's all I have. Trustee Evans.
Okay, next ten to meet date is July 1st. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning. Welcome to the Stakeholder Relations Committee meeting. Roll call by the chair.
All right, the record will reflect that all trustees are present.
There are no comments. Approval of committee meeting minutes, April 29, 2025.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. First off is a presentation by Beth McCoy regarding Public Affairs Outreach Update.
Yes, good morning. Thank you for having me today. Most of you are likely at least somewhat familiar with what we do in Public Affairs since it's public-facing, but I'm sure there's also a lot that you're not familiar with. So I appreciate the opportunity to share what we're doing, but especially why. As far as scope for today, just to be respectful of time, I'm going to really focus on our external efforts, although internal is certainly important to us, as well as our proactive efforts, although reactive is certainly something that we spend a lot of time on. So I want to start with our goals, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Fundamentally, just at a baseline level, as a public entity, we have a responsibility to share with our customers where their money is going and, more importantly, why. So that's kind of the baseline of what we do, that transparency level. But transparency is not enough, especially in our sector. For any public entity, it is very difficult to operate without public trust. And unfortunately for us, just doing our jobs, doing, providing the services that we provide and doing that well is not enough to build public trust. Our system is largely underground and invisible by design. And so people really don't think about us when things are going well. Instead, they think about us either when they pay their bill or when something goes wrong. And so neither of those are really conducive to building public trust. So a lot of what we do in Public Affairs is just bringing visibility to the invisible and building those touch points when things are going well, making sure that people have positive interactions with us, even though they use our services every day and almost all of the time, they're working really well. The third kind of hurdle for us as a public entity is that we can't and really shouldn't invest millions of dollars into ad campaigns that would kind of manufacture that trust and manufacture that ability to share what we're doing. And so we have to be a lot more thoughtful about that and work a lot harder at it. And so one thing you'll notice is that we put a lot of emphasis on high-value interactions, which I'll talk about on the next slide a little more. Before we move on, the last thing I want to mention just is that this is not new to MSD. Investing in public outreach, public affairs, is something that we've been doing for a long time. And so a lot of what you'll see is either stuff that we've been doing for a while or that we've built on top of. So this is not a new effort. Next slide. So I mentioned those high-value interactions. These are people and organizations that, A, have some level of interest in what we do already, and then, B, have some influence in a space that's valuable to us. So lower hurdle to get their attention and a bigger bang for our buck by interacting with them. Our goals for all of these groups are to communicate with them early and often, make sure that they're frequently hearing from us, build relationships and hopefully partnerships with them, get their feedback so that we can continue improving what we do, and then ideally equip them to be ambassadors for us in spaces where we aren't in the room. The first group is our Stakeholder Engagement Committee, or our SEC. These are organizations that either have some interest in our mission or our services. So a lot of community groups, a lot of environmental groups. We meet with them on a quarterly basis and then also interact with them via email outside of those regular meetings. The next group is our Government Affairs Group. So key staff members and elected officials from the city, the county, all 87 municipalities, as well as all of our state elected officials. Our regular interactions with them, we host luncheons for them twice a year to talk with them and get feedback from them, and then, of course, engage with them via email or other channels as appropriate throughout the year. And then the last group is our Appointing Authorities. That's the mayor of St. Louis City and the county executive. Of course, we involve them in both the stakeholder engagement and the government outreach efforts. But we also have briefings with them twice a year to have those one-on-one interactions. Next slide. Kind of bridging the gap between those more focused outreach efforts and kind of broader community outreach efforts, we have our still grassroots engagement, but our community outreach where we're trying to meet people where they are and be visible in the community, share our educational outreach, make sure people understand what our services and programs are, but also how they can be involved in our mission. And then we also use this to target some of those harder-to-reach audiences, like seniors or underrepresented groups, and then mission-aligned audiences. The first item is our Speaker Tour. This is a really high-value engagement that does bridge that gap between high-value and broader outreach. Twice a year, we promote this, but this is an ongoing effort where we offer to go to public meetings for community groups, neighborhood associations, volunteer groups, partisan groups, get on their agenda, talk for five to 10 minutes about one of our programs, one of our services, but meet people where they are and especially target the fact that if you attend a neighborhood meeting, if you attend a volunteer group meeting, you probably have some level of influence in your community as well. And it's a way to make sure that we're reaching those people.
Approximately how many of these a year?
Yeah, let's see. For the Speakers Tour, we've done in the last year 83 events. We specifically targeted CAP, and 28 of those events were for our CAP program. Sorry, CAP, Customer Assistance Program. So trying to get the message out about that. Right now, we're working on our Green Infrastructure Program, making sure people are aware of the grants that Rich was talking about. So we offer to speak about anything, but we'll pick one topic every six months and really promote that. Great question.
You did 83 of those.
Yes, yeah. The next item is our community events, where we have tables at fairs, festivals, other events. And this is where we're either targeting mission-aligned groups, so things like Earth Day, the Green Living Festival, or targeting audiences that are harder to reach through traditional channels. So things like Senior Resource Fairs, the Hispanic Festival, Juneteenth, things like that. And we'll hand out information, but also giveaways and just have those positive touch points in the community. We also do project outreach for all of our major projects, where we target the neighborhoods and communities that are going to be affected by that construction, sending out mailers, creating webpages, and then facilitating public meetings with those groups. And then finally, our surveys, which I've talked about at a previous meeting, so I won't go into too much detail, but making sure that we're getting feedback from all of our customers. Next slide. And then kind of zooming out to our more broader outreach efforts, where we're trying to make sure that everyone is aware of what we're doing or has some kind of positive touch point. This is your more traditional public engagement. So things like media relations, pitching stories to the media, but also building those relationships with our media partners, social media. And that's kind of, our strategy there certainly depends a little bit on the platform, but it definitely varies between paid and organic. On the organic side, again, it's really hard to get an average customer to care about their sewer service, especially when everything is going well. So we especially target those who may already have an interest in our mission or our services on the organic side. And then we use paid to make sure that broader audiences are still seeing our educational and public outreach information.
Beth, you got, do you have like metrics that you're looking for?
We do. I don't have those with me, but we're especially targeting the metrics on our paid side, making sure that, one, we're putting dollars behind something, that it's worthwhile. I know we've had a lot of success with advertising on the pre-roll, which is like before you see a video. Our completion rate on that is through the roof, which basically tells us that we're targeting the right audiences, but also creating content that people want to view. So, but I can get more metrics if you're interested.
Real quick, I don't watch all the stuff, but the, some of the content is really, really, really good.
I agree, thank you.
It's like, wow, if people could just see what, I mean, you know, I'm a little biased because I'm on this board, but what's being done is pretty cool, and you guys are capturing it. So how do we get more people to pay attention?
Yeah, couldn't agree more. And that's where, you know, again, we can't spend millions of dollars on this like a public for-profit. Yeah, it would be questionable about the appropriateness. But we do put paid to make sure that we're reaching broad audiences and people have an opportunity to see that.
And my question was about the paid and the metrics. You know, if you, if there was a bigger budget within what we would be allowed, would there be more that we could do?
There's always more that we can do. I think I would want to look at the value add for that, for sure. But, but yeah, there's always more we can do.
If there's a case to be made for, you know, if I spend $10 more, we're going to get 100 more points of, you know, reach, you know, or something like that. I hope you're presenting that at budget time.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, I can verify that.
Yeah, no, we're very lucky that, you know, compared to a lot of my peers, we do value public outreach and education, and I would say appropriately put money behind it. But that's really everything. I'm sorry? Our budget is, give or take, about a million annually for advertising. Public Affairs specifically puts about $250,000 annually into that. But there is ad budgets in other areas. Finance puts money into advertising stuff. Diversity puts money into that. Environmental compliance puts a lot into that. So that doesn't capture all of what...
Does that all come under your Communications Department, those allocations? Or at least consulting on those?
We consult with how those dollars are spent, yes.
So the brand is consistent?
Exactly, yeah.
And is a percentage of... Is a percentage of overall expenditures for the department, do you, or not for the department, for the district, is your budget the same as it's been or has it been increasing as a percentage?
You know, I've managed the budget for two years now, and it's been kind of gradual, but I would have to look to see if there's been any major changes beyond that.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at that, just to see what the trend is.
Also, is there any benchmarking for, you know, budget size compared to other similar, you know, municipal infrastructure?
I don't believe we've benchmarked that one before. We can certainly look into that and see if there's something out there that could guide us. You know, the amount of funds that we do spend varies a little bit just based on what's going on, you know, if it's the rate commission process, timeframe, or if it's the charter change process, those types of things. We do budget additional dollars at that point to accommodate those things, but then we take them back out of the budget when they're no longer needed there.
That is all I have, so if you have any other questions, happy to...
Two issues, or two questions I have. The first one is your meetings with Appointing Authorities. Can, because this is the first, I mean, I know you have those meetings. I didn't know that it was a part of your program. Can we get advised on the results of those meetings, or at least, because I might want to come to one of those meetings. I never talk, I don't think I've talked to the mayor twice in six years almost. So, I don't know what discussions would be going on, and I'd like to maybe take the opportunity when the district sits with them to kind of hear, at least hear what the mayor has an interest in, and usually it's early in the term.
Yeah.
If I get a chance to speak to him, or the person that did the initial appointment. So, if, can we get any feedback? And I don't know how you feel about maybe...
Sure.
...going to that meeting.
It's perfectly fine with me. You know, what we can do is send you some of the topics that we've discussed with them in the past meetings, which are some of our larger initiatives or things that they might be concerned about with regards to what's going on in the community and stuff. Absolutely.
The second issue is the, kind of, I guess, the public outreach. I've seen some of the material that you've put out, and it's great. I really think, I'm just not sure that it's of an interest. If you don't touch the person at the right time, then it may not mean as much to them. What I don't see, or don't know what's happening with people that have problems, while this is an attempt to educate the public in general, if a person walks in here two times in a year, or every rain event, major rain event, with a problem, I don't get the feeling that we're targeting information for that individual for that problem.
Yeah.
Sometimes it goes, you can kind of tell it happened because they don't come back. But when I hear them, start hearing folks, every time it rains, they've got the same basic problem.
Yeah, yeah, so that would be more...
Are we doing anything to target?
Yeah, absolutely, and that would fall more on our reactive side, so it's something that I didn't really touch on here. Of course, at that point, it's not just a public affairs issue, it's going to be more organizational.
With the communications issue from the MSD perspective.
Exactly, exactly. Our role there is typically to advise on, you know, putting together communication for them, helping to make sure that it's more accessible, more understandable, but ultimately, it's a partnership with us and whoever, whatever division or department is kind of responsible for, how do we fix that? How do we make this better? And so, you know, I will say anecdotally, a lot of times, the people that I see come back multiple times, you know, sometimes it's just that they're not getting the answer that they want, and you know, that's something that's hard to, yeah.
I guess the ones I'm interested in, they're not getting an answer, a timely answer necessarily that fixes the problem.
Yeah.
And maybe the problem can't be fixed in the way they'd like to see it fixed, but we went through the budget a couple, and this is not your area, but we went through the budget a couple of weeks ago, and shortly after that, I heard these same issues with several, with the Belle Fountain, that area. My thoughts right after that was, what in the budget, is there anything in the budget that's designed that would happen in the near term or in the next budget's year that would affect positively their situation? And if it does, that's an opportunity to put something on the wall that they can look forward to positively. And I don't know that that's not happening, but I don't know that it is happening.
And so, I would save that thought. We were going to have a discussion here in closed session to discuss Mead Avenue, so hold on to that, and I'll hit on some of that then. I do want to add that, you know, and Best didn't hit on it because it is our process, when a customer has an issue, they contact us, and we have a really rigid response to them, and that means a timely response, our crews being out there if there's follow-up work that has to be done, our field engineers out there looking at the issue if it's a bigger thing than just a blockage or something like that. So, there is a lot of communication that takes place on that side when a customer does contact us, but it's not a proactive communication, it's a reactive communication to what took place.
We also, you know, we survey post-contact when we've interacted with a customer, and generally speaking, our customers rate us higher after they've had an interaction with us. More often than not, it's after they've called us because there's been a problem. And so, there are certainly those outliers, there are certainly those instances where we don't have the solution they want, or we don't have it as quickly as they want. But generally speaking, the survey results would point that our customer service and reaction to issues tends to be on the positive side.
Okay, thank you. And again, I think you do a great job on that proactive, proactive side of things.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Best. Now, we have a discussion by you regarding a resolution for Public Engagement Services?
Yeah, very good timing on this. This is a resolution authorizing the renewal of our contract with Standpoint, which is our public affairs, public outreach consultant. This is allowing us to enter into the first of three option years with them.
Was this our first, the first time with Standpoint?
So, the first, last year was the first year when we originated the contract. We have three additional, yeah, and we've, Standpoint has been our consultant for 13 years.
That's what I was...
Quite a while, yeah.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Best.
Thank you.
Now, we'll have a discussion by Shawna Perdiz regarding an ordinance for professional services for a workforce development program.
As promised in my semi-annual report, I am seeking approval for a workforce development program for professional services. The purpose of the program is to fulfill our requirements of the Community Benefits Agreement whereby MSD will provide assistance to low-income, displaced, unemployed, and underemployed within MSD's service area to obtain training and development opportunities in the area of professional services sewer industry occupations. Now, this is an approved Department of Labor apprenticeship program developed by Construction Forum, who is the intermediary sponsor of the program. The Forum's role is to develop and administer the program's standards, recruit participants, sustain industry engagement, facilitate the required higher education training, monitor and track and report the apprentice progress to the required Department of Labor reporting area. The approved program model facilitates a roadmap for entry point positions within professional services industry to include survey technician, construction, materials, environmental, and engineering technicians. With the first cohort of the program getting started just a month ago with five candidates who were, who are now employed with pre-qualified MSD firms. So, we're getting off to a good start with the program. This model supports, for instance...
Can I ask a question about that? So, the people who are helped through this program are not necessarily, the goal is not necessarily to hire them at MSD, but perhaps with other contractors who we routinely work with, is that the, or is it both?
It is the latter. Actually, the, it said the model is similarly situated like our construction side for workforce development with our Bud program, and so, our, the intermediary sponsor of the program, they fully administer and recruit the participants specifically with MSD's firms in mind. So, they work very closely with our pre-qualified firms that we use, for instance, for subcontracting meeting goals, and our workforce efforts to establish a pathway for those subcontractors to have available workers, and so that the training and development component is also taking place that we agree to by way of our Community Benefits Agreement. So, it serves multiple purposes. One is to provide resources directly to the firms that do work with MSD, and the other is to facilitate our participation within the communities that are underserved.
Is there any, it's very valuable work, so I'm not in any way curt, I'm encouraging of it, but those firms who are pre-qualified, they get a lot of business from MSD. Is one of the conditions for pre-qualification that they themselves invest in these kinds of programs as opposed to MSD doing it?
Great question. So, how the program is set up is that firms that use the programs that are provided as resources for them to, for instance, meet goals, those firms are given what they call it good faith efforts for their efforts of using those programs in the event that they are, for instance, not meeting utilization or workforce goals, and they use our programs as a resource, and they come back and give us documentation and information that they are actually actively participating in these programs when they're unable to attain goals or meet goals. That is one of the things that they can use as a resource for, you know, when they're having some difficulty meeting our program standards or requirements.
That still involves MSD giving them the resources to do that as opposed to them investing their own resources because of their, you know, the payoff is they get more contracts and, you know, profits from MSD.
Correct. So, as one, one of the things that from an investment standpoint, for instance, particularly for this program, is that it is an approved apprentice program. We have requirements, they have a, our participants have a starting minimum pay of $20 per hour. They are given full fringe benefits from the companies that hire them. They are required to complete 4,000 OJT hours and 288 hours of accredited classroom instruction through the program, through the apprentice program. So, there is an investment upfront on the part of the firms that actually have hired the apprentice to participate in the two-year program. You're welcome. So, we're seeking approval for the program to be implemented for one base year with an additional four-year option, and of course, in diversity semi-annual, annual reporting, we will report out on the program's progress whenever diversity is doing our reporting. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, discussion by Tracy Coleman regarding an ordinance for the district's classification plan.
Good morning, trustees. So, I'd like to bring your attention to the introduction and adoption of Ordinance 16622, which is for the classification plan. As you know, the classification plan holds all of the job titles that we have here at the district. We want to retitle a current position that's on the plan, which is currently called the Assistant Supervisor Pumps. That position will be retitled to Assistant Supervisor Plants and Pumps. And then we're going to remove a couple of positions. Those positions have not removed jobs or people from the district, it's just these are titles that are no longer used, which is the Assistant Supervisor Plants position and the specification associate position. That is all I have for that particular ordinance. Are there any questions or concerns? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tracy. Now, discussion by Todd Oshbacher regarding a resolution for Federal Legislative Consulting Services.
Thank you. Good morning, trustees. I'm actually kind of going to group the next item and this one together because they're very similar. I actually have six resolutions to present to you this morning, all for renewals of contracts managed by the legal department. First is a resolution authorizing MSD to renew our agreement with our federal legislative advisor, Brent Franzen and his company Cardinal Point Advisor. Cardinal Point and Brent have been our lobbyists in Washington for many years. We're continuing that relationship. Last year, they were awarded a new contract. We are now in the first, we're asking you to authorize the first renewal of that contract for a 12-month term. Next, we have five legal service contracts. These two are up for one-year renewal options. These are contracts with law firms that provide services to the district representing us in trials, liability matters, for matters requiring particular expertise such as environmental law or employee benefits. These two are all one-year contract renewals. The contracts were competitively bid and awarded one year ago. The five firms that we are requesting authorization to do the renewals with are as follows. First, Helmick, Hill, and Redder. Our primary contact there is a lawyer by the name of Jason Redder. Next, Quarles and Brady. Our principal contact is Travis Kirby. Third, Renirson, Seuss, Schnerbush, and Champion. Debbie Champion is our primary contact there. Thompson Coburn LLP. Paul Sanderager is our contact, and finally, White Coleman and Associates headed by Dorothy White Coleman, a certified MWBE. Are there any questions? If not, that's all I have this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Now, I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss personal actions under Section 610.021.3 RSMO, legal actions, causes of actions or litigation under Section 610.021.1 RSMO, leasing, purchasing, leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate under Section 610.021.1 under section 610.021.2 RSMO.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote.
Aye.
Trustee Wabi?
Aye.
Trustee Watson?
Todd.
We'll come back to him. Trustee Evans?
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Nixon?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
I'm trying.
Closed session?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we are in closed session.
Two.
Alright, that was to come out of closed session, so we're back in open session.
Next tentative meeting date Tuesday, July first, twenty twenty five motion for adjournment.
Very.